Before caucus, we had an executive session tonight to discuss personnel matter and potential litigation. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as temporary chair for the committee on rules. Second.
On the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved. Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Date to be Held June 26, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive and file.
3B Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Date Held June 5, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive and file.
3C Minutes of the Regular Meeting of Scranton Redevelopment Authority Held May 1, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive and file.
3D Minutes of the Civil Service Commission Meeting Held May 9, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, receive and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. The Dunmore Historical Society is presenting John Mitchell, An American Hero: A Dramatic Reading Written and Performed by Robert Thomas Hughes. This two-act play will be presented as an interview revealing personal and professional insights into the life of Mr. John Mitchell. The original play is also a tribute to Mr. Mitchell as a champion of labor and defender of human rights. The performance date will be June 23rd, which is a Sunday at 2:00 PM. Tickets are $5 per person. The play is to be performed at the Dunmore Historical Society located at 120 Barton Street in Dunmore. Thank you.
I have two announcements. Next Monday, June 24th, there'll be public caucus at 5:15 with NDC to discuss 5B and 5C on tonight's agenda. Both of those pieces are related to parking meter zoning and downtown residential parking program. Also, there'll be a public hearing held at 5:45 for item 5D, which is amending a portion of the OECD's home funding for a project with Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency for Housing. Note again, council will hold daytime meetings for the month of July. We'll meet weekly at 12:30 PM and hold caucus at noon in the clerk's office or in council chambers if necessary. The weekly meetings in July will be held Wednesdays due to work schedules that conflict with meetings on Mondays. Our daytime meeting will begin on Wednesday, July 3rd at 12:30, and will continue with that schedule for the four remaining Wednesdays that follow. Also, a change, a slight change with fourth order. We will be implementing a program. We'll still be honoring, of course, the five-minute time limit, but there'll be a 30-second bell prior to your five minutes just to, you can wrap up your thought at that time. At that, once your five minutes is up, we will ask for you to leave podium for the new speaker to come up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodouanis.
Joan Hodouanis, city resident taxpayer. With regard to 5E on the agenda, the Royther Bowen Contract, I call your attention to pages 85 and 119 in the backup. Page 85 says, "As noted in the RFP, there are no relationships existing between the firm's employees or principals and any official of the City of Scranton." Page 119 is the disclosure by firm or contractor. There are five disclosures. Only number three refers to what is mentioned on page 85. I don't see answers for 1, 2, 4, and 5. Yet, number six says, "Omission of any responses required in questions 1 through 5 may result in the disqualification of the proposal." Where are the answers to 1, 2, 4, and 5 on page 119? Next, with regard to 5F, the UGI resolution. Please explain in fifth order why UGI is asking for this. City can pave, we can pave or pay to pave to the center line, but the city has to do curb to curb. I got totally lost in that explanation as I read through it. You should look at pages 141 and 143. On 143, with regard to minor maintenance, item K, "The city agrees that UGI's work performed in Mulberry, Wheeler, and Linden Streets within the city has been accepted, acceptably restored in accordance with PennDOT standards, and UGI need not perform any additional work on those streets beyond what it has performed to date. If the city wishes to repave these streets curb to curb, it would do so at its own expense." Last time I looked, Mulberry, Wheeler, and Linden went on for several city blocks, and I don't think those streets are in good condition, so somebody should take a look at that paragraph. With regard to 5G, the 500 Lackawanna Development Company and marking as satisfied and paid in full its $550,000 loan. I'd like some kind of explanation of that in fifth order. What justifies them not repaying that loan? And 6A, rental registration, setting up the escrow account. I have to agree with the editorial that appeared in this morning's paper. We have a tendency in the history of this city to enact ordinances and resolutions and then not follow through. So many times, we say, "Well, you can do this, or you can't do this," and then there's no enforcement of the ordinances. I think that the city administration needs to sit down and explain to you as legislators and to the people how they're going to administer and enforce this program. You know, and I agree that this should be done, but I agree also with the paper's comment that we're opening the door for a lot of lawsuits if this is not done properly. And the last thing the city needs is another lawsuit. So if you would address those items, please, in fifth order. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. You know, in recent weeks, everybody's criticizing Bob Boalas. You people up there, letters to the editor, people calling Talk Back 16. Bob Boalas is a better person than all you people criticizing him put together. He does more for his community than any of you will ever do in your lifetime. That Christmas dinner he has, he's had it for 20-some years, and I'm volunteering, this will be my 17th year volunteering. That's fantastic. He feeds thousands of people on Christmas Day, all out of his own pocket, and you people criticize him. And not only this community, he goes outside the community. I forget where it was, there was a natural disaster, whether it was flooding or hurricane, he had his trucks loaded with supplies, free, and had those supplies driven out to where that natural disaster was. Nobody that's criticized him ever did something like that. Also, he went halfway around the world to try and get a soldier's remains from Japan brought back here so they can be properly buried. You people criticize him? I said, "He's a better person than any of you put together." All you people criticize him, especially Chris Kelly from the Times Tribune. He's nothing but an old door he hacked, anyway. So before you criticize, think of what he's done for his community and outside the community before you criticize him. He has his right to free speech, as it does everybody else. Moving on, Joan mentioned about the streets. I brought it up last week. Streets are being killed by these utilities. I brought up a street by me, Elizabeth Street, was just paved less than a year ago. The 1700 block has ISA 3 pave cuts last week. It's four pave cuts. And I asked if there's legislation on that, and did anybody look and see if there's any ordinance that prevents that from happening?
Yeah, we passed an ordinance back in 2015, revamping the whole pave cut ordinance. Actually, that's what 5F is about, because when we did that, UGI sued the city, and 5G is a settlement agreement, or 5F, rather.
Well, if anybody should be sued, it's these utilities killing our streets. I said last week, "You can't drive anywhere in the city without seeing these streets being dug up." I don't know what they're doing, but it's ridiculous. And I said, "Elizabeth Street, they should have to pave that whole block, not just patch the pave cuts they did." And lastly, I also brought up last week about revenue sources that Bob Boalas has brought up in the past that maybe we could do away with that illegal garbage fee, but nobody looks into that. The man comes here, week after week, year after year, with good ideas for revenue sources, and nobody does anything. You put the burden on the homeowners, and not everybody that lives in the city. Everybody that lives in the city should pay their fair share, not just the homeowners paying that illegal garbage fee. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ron Elman.
In 1959, I got married and settled in San Francisco. Now, remember that for a second. In the early '60s, one night at Elvis's house on Pagola Way, that's not where I cleaned the swimming pool I've talked about, I met a young fellow my age named Vic Taylor. We decided to go into the swimming pool business because he had some financial backing from a lady named Kitty Gray. Kitty was the epitome lesbian, and she, she made sure that we were successful in our business financially. And Vic swung both ways. He liked older women and all, but he was, he was a mess. Later years came, came back to haunt him. Where am I going with all this? There's no one, no one has ever stood here before you and had a more liberal view of society than me. I just mentioned just a few things years ago, but this, this poor Jennifer, she is the worst of the worst wanting to be sitting up there with you. She has no experience, no knowledge. This isn't a personal attack, because I couldn't care less about her private life, as you see. This city is falling apart. This council and this mayor don't want to realize, like, $850,000 for sidewalks. I walked around there today, and if that's not some kind of crooked deal, I don't know what is. Have any of you seen what's being done for $850,000? Like I said, sidewalks on private property going to Guy Signer's? This isn't the electric city, this is the crooked city, I tell you. You people just are deaf to what's going on and blind. But no one, no one should be asked to vote for someone, white, black, Irish, Italian. It should be on their merits. You shouldn't be, I don't know the right words, you shouldn't be belittled because I don't agree with this person. I've been told, I've been called some names because I won't vote for her. She doesn't belong here at this time. She never participated in this council, the commissioners' meetings, school board meetings, zoning board, even the library. She has no experience and no knowledge of running, of sitting up there in one of those seats. You know why we got her? Because 80% of these people out here that are complaining about her didn't vote. Whoever heard of 80% just don't care what's going on? This is the sad state, I tell you. This city is, with all the problems like the sewer deal and reassessment, she has never spoken a word about what's going on in this city. Even Kelly, "Vote for her because she's a lesbian." This, this is senseless. We need somebody up there that's educated, that knows what's going on. This city's in deep doo-doo, you guys know it. One other thing, real quick, I had a lady tell me at the grocery store today, they quit funding the county buses that pick up disabled, and does anyone know about it? You know, that's what a lady told me, was waiting for the bus, and it's going to stop to take them to doctors and all. This needs to be looked into, if it's, if it's a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. That's all the names on the sign-in sheet. Does anybody else want to speak with council tonight? Sure. Good evening. Just, if you would just state your name, please.
Jerry Healy. Jerry Healy, I was here last week. Concerns about the diversion of appropriated funds for LST taxes going to a school district, like double taxing people to actually pay taxes to the school district. You know, I'm thinking I'm paying, like, fix the, you know, shovel the snow, fire engines, but Scranton School District thinks they get a piece of that. Why? There's no, no answer. I got a call, one of the secretaries, and she said, "Contact this man, his name was Bob Hedrich," you know? I talked to a Christie, and she's like, you know, give me a hard time. Every question I ask her, she's asking me a question. I say, "How come, what local services does Scranton still, you know, they provide to people, like, from out of town?" She goes, "Are you from out of town?" That's not what I'm asking. What services do you provide? He goes, "Well, your kids went to school here, didn't they? They got a good education, so why are you complaining?" What the hell is that? You know, I mean, come on. I'm asking you a question, I'm getting six different questions back at me. You know, "We'll give you the answer, we'll call you, we'll call you back." And that was Wednesday, when your people said, "Well, you're gonna, we're gonna find an answer for you, Jerry. Your answer is, here's a phone number, go find your own $5 bill back from the, you know, the guy." So my calculation is it's probably over $1 million been siphoned off our funds to, like, plow the streets, you know? And people come out, "They're paying Scranton, why is Scranton, they're getting it." And they still have an answer. And have you already got an answer yet? I mean, I mean, that's, that's the one issue I'm wondering, and I haven't got a response on it. Waiting for this guy Hedrick, and I guess, "We pay your taxes for your salaries, and I'll do your job, too, and call him, you know, and find out, like, why, you know, what's going on, you know?" Unless you want to provide me the phone number, Debra Squali, so I can say, "Hey, my calculation is it's only $1 million in $5 from every person that ever worked in Scranton for the last 10 years, went to some account that nobody knows about." Nobody can explain it. They can't explain what the local service is. I mean, I'm kind of getting confused. And on that note, I hope you can give me some answers someday, because, I mean, that is diversion of funds. I mean, these are, these funds are for this reason alone. You know, when I said to her, like, "What happens when somebody from Mount Polkino comes down? Why is he paying $5 to Scranton School District?" And she goes, "Well, what's it to you? You're not from, not from there, you're from here." What kind of answer is that from a person that works for, paying taxes to? Now, the second issue is something totally off the mark, it's about that thing you have with the deadbeat landlord, the guy doesn't pay garbage fees or taxes. The houses across the street from me, where they're evicting, like, a whole bunch of tenants, okay? Now, the only thing I have an issue with is that, in the paper, it says it's an eight-unit property unfit for occupation. It was never an eight-unit, ever. It was a six-unit for 75 years, and two years ago, this landlord decided to make a six-unit into an eight-unit. No permits necessary, no things in the window saying, "Work done." Hires gypsy guys to do illegal electrical wiring. "Hey, you know how to plumbing? Hey, my brother-in-law does." He's a, he's not licensed, he'll get it done. So they take a six-unit building, they convert it to an eight-unit building, and now the paper reports it as an eight-unit building. How's that for fun? You know, so somebody does take it, or is it going to be an eight-unit building, or what was, what it's supposed to be, a six-unit illegally converted to an eight-unit? Do you have an answer for that?
I'm not familiar with that exact zoning, yeah. No, I'll, I'll definitely do the research on it, but whatever, whatever our licensed inspection department has it listed as is what it is.
Oh, I notified them, too. You know, I said, "You got guys in here doing electrical work and plumbing work, and they have no certification, they're not electricians or nothing, there's no permits, and he's taking a six-unit building and making it to an eight-unit building." And he did. And the paper even said it's an eight-unit building, because eight, eight families being evicted from it after they paid the rent two weeks ago. To this guy, who you're trying to get money out of, he takes the money from the people, and then, then you kick him out. Kind of, you know, it's really kind of, you know, like, makes you wonder, like, you know, people got to get on the ball here a little bit, you know, like, find out what's going on, you know? That's all. Give me an answer, please, someday.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address council?
David Dobson, resident taxpayer. Last week, over the hoopla, I asked for people the right to at least finish their sentence when that five-minute bell rings. I would appreciate that. And I'd also like to remind people that I don't have to vote for you if you continue with that kind of treatment. I mean, if somebody wants to stand up here for three minutes bashing somebody in hate speech, then call the cops, but at least let somebody get the last three words out of their mouth so it makes sense to somebody. Once again, we're going on our summer schedule, and isn't it amazing? We're going to be opening up the bids to repurpose City Hall on daytime hours, where anyone interested might be even having to take a day off from work. Fortunately, I don't. And they better be good, because I promise to be like a plague of locusts on the subject of dumping City Hall. A plague of locusts in biblical times. Once again, pass the library ordinance through so that they could get an authority and get their grants, and 99.99999% of the people that work and volunteer at the library probably didn't even so much as steal a magazine. So we have a good crowd down there, and let's keep it that way and have a vibrant library. There was a lot of said, I don't know if things changed, because I didn't look at it on the flag last week, and the flag flies at the right-hand corner of Mulberry Street, the American flag of the United States, and on the corner of Mulberry and Washington Avenue. And some people were portraying it that the flag was taken down for the other issue, and that is not true. I mean, I've been married 43 years. In a traditional marriage, I mean, drive by and shoot me, please. You know, but the flag was up there, although it is obscured, so maybe someday we could look into getting it up a little higher than the street signs, because it is obscured with all the traffic signs hanging on the poles up there. And once again, on trash collection, please, keep the pressure going, start collecting the trash fees, because if somebody's house is appraised that they're paying $1,200 a year in property tax, and you can only raise by millage, and somebody else is paying $8,000 a year in property tax, and there are houses that are taxed at such a rate. I have a high school friend, her tax on her parents' mansion, which she's inheriting, but, you know, it's like $8,200 a year for her to stay in this house, and she can't turn it into an apartment house, and I think it's on a corner up in Hill Section, so there would be plenty of parking, she can do nothing with it other than live there. And that would probably translate into, you know, somebody else getting their property tax raised $1,000. So if you put it, paid for trash collection under taxes and raised the millage, one person's going to be paying maybe $100 more, and somebody else is going to be paying $1,000 or $1,200 more. So that's a defective, and we really need to push the recycling. Okay, I concluded at that, we really need to push the recycling. It's time, people. You have the family, I don't, I had a lot of fun. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address council?
Marie Schumacher. Unless one of you can convince me otherwise, I view 6A as a potential legal nightmare. Until I read the Times Tribune editorial today, my biggest issue was whether targeting collection, that is, going after those who owe the highest dollar amount, but not all of the people who have not paid, would be discrimination and subject to a potential lawsuit. However, I now question discrimination between registered and unregistered rental property owners. At least one member of this council was made aware that the Scranton Sewer Authority, when it still existed, had hired someone to identify all properties with more than one unit, which would have formed a basis for potential rental property, properties provision, of which should have been made in the sale of the assets. But it was not. Now, thanks to the editorial comes the biggie. How on God's green earth can you set a 20% service charge when a service charge is a form of a fee? In government, the difference between a fee and a tax is that a fee is paid for specific goods or services rendered by the government. So how can a fee amount be set if we don't know the cost of implementing or even what the collection process is at this time? Now, to 5C. Neither the mayor or any other single person, person should be allowed to set fees unilaterally. So that should be a no. And finally, for tonight, on 5G, about a decade ago, Scranton's Redevelopment Authority bought the empty lot at 500 Lackawanna Avenue for around a quarter of a million dollars, and in a short period of time, sold it to, I believe, Mr. Rinaldi for $1 to be developed within a given period of time, or it could revert back to the Redevelopment Authority. As the eye will tell, the property was not developed, and Joan Hodouanis brought this to the attention of the Redevelopment Authority. Now, do we really want to provide another half million dollars for this lot? I believe there are more critical issues. And now, I will take my seat, but I would ask that you address the following three items in fifth order. The status of the roads listing for paving this year. What time on the 15th of July will PEL be here to make their presentation? Will it be part of the meeting, or will it be separate, and what time? And I would also like to know what happened or is happening to the firefighter who had, I believe it was three DUIs, and we, we know what happened to the police officer. I believe it was, three DUIs, and we know what happened to the police officer who couldn't carry a gun, wasn't going to be allowed to carry a gun for several years. But I don't really know, and would like to know what happened to that firefighter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address counsel tonight?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
Yeah, just to touch on a couple of what the speaker said. We did ask that the city solicitor come in and give us further explanation on both 5F and 5G, the settlement agreements. In terms of 6A, we have requested more information about how they're going to implement that program, rental registration. So we're going to see what they give us before next week. And I know Mr. Gahan had asked for the street paving list, and we still haven't received it. And it's still not ready, I don't believe. And I think the Pell thing is at twelve fifteen. Twelve fifteen is Pell on July fifteen.
No, well, or is it? What are we doing? No, we're doing noon. We're doing noon, I'm sorry.
Yeah, noon.
Noon. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Very briefly, right, so twelve o'clock, noon is P E L on the fifteenth of July, or tenth. I don't like it, I think the fifteenth, we're on Wednesday now, Wednesday time. Very briefly, I'd like to congratulate the recreation authority that oversees Naught Park on the recent announcement that they have worked out a deal with Geisinger CMC for a long-term commitment for the park, for a substantial amount of money. You may have seen that in the paper this morning. Also, thank Geisinger CMC for stepping up and being a good neighbor of the park. This will go a long way to not only improving the park, but making it sustainable for years to come. So that's a very, it's nice to see positive news in the paper every now and then. And finally, all I have to say is every day is your chance to make this city a little better. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahan, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, thank you. In regards to Mrs. Schumacher's question about the fireman, I had asked and posed the same question and received notice from the HR department and the HR director that he is still employed by the city. So that was the only response that I received. The last two weeks, I brought up 913-915 Einan Street. Councilman Evans, Councilman Donahue, and myself have been out there to look at this house. Mr. Hinton had told us that this house was tied up in litigation. We had requested from the law department more of an explanation on that. Mr. Hinton explained that the city was going to take further action against the property owners. We did receive correspondence from Michael O'Brien of Oliver Price and Rhodes, who is representing the City of Scranton Housing Appeals Board in the matter of Bing Chang versus City of Scranton Housing Appeals Board, 2014. Just want to briefly read the letter that he sent. Enclosed, please find a memorandum and order dated May 24, 2018, wherein Judge Munnely denies the property owner's appeal, upheld the relevant order of condemnation, and further directed Mr. Chang to arrange for a walk-through, necessary affidavit and bond, remediation work, and a subsequent inspection relative to the property at 913-915 Einan Street. As of this date, Mr. Chang has failed to schedule these items in accordance with Judge Munnely's order. Counsel for Mr. Chang has repeatedly requested additional time to comply with the order attached, and has sought to apply for a special exception wherein he may secure certain zoning approval, which would, in his view, allow for the economic considerations that he deems appropriate prior to abating the unlawful condition of current property. This request, however, should have no bearing on the property owner's obligation to abide by Judge Munnely's order and the relevant provisions of the city code as it may relate to the property maintenance. Based on the above, I have advised opposing counsel that we have prepared and intend to present a motion to enforce Judge Munnely's May 24, 2018 order, and to seek any other such relief is appropriate and consistent with the city code. I will provide a copy of this motion for your review upon filing. I was in contact with the residents in the 900 block of Einan Street and in that vicinity who are concerned about this property and the property's condition, and they were pleased, I think, that now we have a better understanding of what legal action is being taken in regards to this property. And I do want to note that, you know, many times, people are under the impression, for a number of different reasons. One, I think, might be from a lack of communication that the city isn't doing anything with some of these properties. And if you look at the order here that will take you through, since 2014, the city actually has tried to rectify this issue, and it is spelled out in the order. So I do want to thank the city administration, Mr. Hinton, and Mr. O'Brien and the law department for providing this and giving us a better idea of where this property stands, and I think giving the neighbors a little bit more comfort that, you know, something is in the works to rectify that issue. The 1100 to 1400 block of Orem Street received notification from neighbors about water runoff issues, pavement coming up, revealing old brick paved underneath. The DPW director responded that actually this block of Orem Street is going to be paved by, I believe, the water or gas company. They're redoing the service lines, so there is no need for the DPW at this point to go out and mill and pave the street, because that is going to be taken care of eventually by one of the utility companies. We received a request that I'd like to forward, Mrs. Reed, to the DPW and also to the chief of police from a gentleman regarding the 1100 block of Hampton Street. He's requesting that that street be put on the paving list, and also, he is detailing some concerns about Hampton Street being so narrow. So if we could forward that, please, to DPW. Also, I received a few calls about 1441, 1443 North Sumner Avenue. Apparently, last week, the police department and other law enforcement agencies had raided this home. Neighbors are concerned. They would like to know if the property is condemned and what the status of this property is. They have called about this and tried to get some answers. So, Mrs. Reed, if we could try to find out for them what's going on with that property. Also, Councilman Donahue and I had asked for quite a few weeks now about the case against the City of Scranton and the Licensing and Inspections Department in regards to Theodore Brunel, with the city losing the case, or I don't know if they settled or lost or whatever, but we would have to pay out a very large amount. So I just want to read into the record the letter from Jessica Eskra, the city solicitor. I am in receipt of your letter of June 11, 2019. By way of background, this case, Theodore Brunel versus City of Scranton, involved allegations by the plaintiff that his contractor license was revoked without affording him due process. At the time of revocation, the Housing Board of Appeals had been defunct for several years, and it would have been impossible to establish the same in the short time period allowed. Subsequent to discovery, the plaintiff filed a motion for partial summary judgment. The court partially granted plaintiff's motion for summary judgment as to his procedural due process claim. Specifically, the court found that the city had failed to provide Mr. Brunel the appropriate procedural due process prior to and after the revocation of his electrical license. All other aspects of the plaintiff's motion were denied. In response to Councilman Donahue's questions and mine about why the insurance coverage for the city was denied, Solicitor Eskra explains that the insurance coverage for the claim was denied as the plaintiff's complaint alleged conduct and malicious prosecution, which are not covered by our insurance policy, and sought damages in the form of injunctive relief, which is also not covered by our insurance policy. Attorney's fees are included and reflected in the settlement figure. It is unknown how plaintiff and his counsel allocated the total settlement award amongst themselves. The settlement was paid from the Court Awards line item in the 2018-2019 budget. Other suits that include Director Hinton as a defendant have been filed by Alexander Brunel, Kelly Clea, Stephen Guerannon, George and Judith Reiner, and Svi Skeddy. This list may not be exhaustive, but includes those that may have a significant impact. I just would like to follow up on this letter, Mrs. Reed, if we can, because I believe Councilman Donahue and I specifically requested the insurance coverage denial letter from the insurance carrier. So if we could send a follow-up, I'm assuming that Mrs. Eskra just forgot to put that in there. I would appreciate that for next week. And that is all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. Yeah, I only have a couple things. Mr. Gahan, how long ago did we get communication from the HR department about that fireman? Do we know how long ago about? Because I don't remember seeing it come through.
It was in an email, right, correct, Mrs. Reed, I think. Might have been three or four weeks. It was a while ago.
Okay, all right, okay. Really only have a couple of quick housekeeping things. If we could, I'd like to take advantage of American Water's offer to clean out some storm drains as needed. The 2600 block of Pittston Avenue, again, they did it last year, and it was, they did a fantastic job with the recent flooding that we did have. A lot of sediment did build up in it, and I would just like that cleaned out again. I think it was eight months about since it was done. And after that last one, that would be some great preventive maintenance to take care of that. So I'll definitely take them up in that offer. And then, thank you for getting back with the Kane and Kirst court light. I know that that's been notified and been on the books since mid-May, but it's still out right now. If we can do a follow-up letter, just to see where we are with that. And I can let the people in that area know that, maybe give them a timeframe when that light's going to be getting taken care of. And then, finally, we had a speaker, I wasn't here last week, he brought up the LST breakdown. Did we send anything out on the LST breakdown for an answer for him about where it goes or what the breakdown is for him? So we're just waiting for a response back? Okay, all right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
5B, excuse me, for introduction, an ordinance amending file of the council number 41, 2016, amending file of the council number 91, 2002, an ordinance as amended, providing for the establishment of parking meter zones within the City of Scranton, establishing hours of operation, providing for the installation of meters and parking meter rates, authorizing the enforcement of parking ordinances, and providing penalties for violations thereof by amending section 3A to reflect the change in hourly rates, by amending section 1 to add a definition, section 7 to modify the use, section 14A and B to change the temporary suspension, section 15A and B to address changes for permit parking, and to add section 21, adopting the map for on-street parking, section 22 to abolish time-zone parking, and to create loading zones within the downtown.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this is basically an omnibus-type bill, an all-encouraging bill. This type of legislation, it's really to correct, to correct some of the proliferation of all kinds of signs downtown. We have fifty-minute signs, we have thirty-minute signs, we have no parking for bank signs, and a lot of them just appeared over the years, so we're trying to get a handle on that. And many of that, those signs, didn't even have enabling legislation to be put in place. So this is going to correct that, it's going to establish no loading zone signs, one per block, so it'll allow the businesses to be able to park and load, and then move on to where they would normally park their car. So I think overall, it's going to be a positive. And it's a precursor to the kiosk parking plan as well. So that's what's going on with that particular type of legislation.
All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the City of Scranton to approve downtown residential parking rates for the downtown Scranton resident parking program.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, an ordinance amending file of the council number 47, 2013, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2014, by amending the 2014 Action Plan by utilizing one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-two dollars and ninety cents under the Home Investment Partnership Program to build a two-unit rental house for low-income families in the City of Scranton, or to acquire and rehab two vacant houses in the City of Scranton for low-income families by and through the Scranton Lackawanna Resources Development Corporation, a subsidiary of the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Luther Bowen, PC, to provide engineering services for the City of Scranton 2019 roadway improvement project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, as Councilman Donahue had mentioned, and to answer Mrs. Schumacher's question, I had asked for the paving list, but apparently, it has not been prepared yet. Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a settlement agreement by and between UGI Utilities Incorporated, the City of Scranton, and Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission to settle litigation filed against the city and PUC by UGI.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, as we discussed in caucus, the plan here with this legislation is to introduce it this week, and then next week, table it until the law department and the DPW, I'd hope the PAVE could inspector would also be a part of that, could come in and provide further clarification and explanation on this settlement agreement. I'm still in the process of reviewing it, but just as Ms. Hoda-Wanis had brought up, I do have several questions, and I think there's several points of clarification that need to be reviewed. Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to enter into a settlement and mutual general release with 500 Lackawanna Development Company concerning project number as noted from the Urban Development Action Grant Program for a loan in the amount of five-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars, passed by resolution number 39, 2006.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, just as with the previous piece of legislation, and as we discussed in the caucus, I would hope that we would introduce this piece of legislation tonight, and then next week, table it until we are able to meet with the city solicitor, the director of the Office of Economic and Community Development, and also their solicitor, so that we can provide, or they can provide further clarification on this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Yeah, on the question, these, when, these are only in two readings, so sometimes it happens quick, and there's a lot of information for us to digest, and I think it's just prudent to introduce it, collect our information, meet with the proper people that give us our answers, and then, and go on further. So I am agreeing with introducing this and then tabling it next week to get the proper information.
Yeah, on the question, we talked a little bit in caucus about this. I think when there's settlements and there's litigation, it should almost be our policy to talk to someone from the law department prior to a final vote. So I think we'll continue to do that as well.
All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a grant agreement by and between the County of Lackawanna and City of Scranton pertaining to a community reinvest grant, number 2013-32 revised.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I believe that this legislation is basically repurposing the funds which were originally earmarked for the Fellow's Park project, and now the city, per a February 2018 letter, is requesting that it be repurposed for the Naught Park treehouse. Naught Park Treehouse.
All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title filed with the council number 66, 2019, and ordinance creating and establishing special city escrow account number as noted, entitled, Rental Registration Tenant Escrow, to accept and disburse funds received from rental payments from tenants whose landlords have failed to comply with registering their rental properties in the City of Scranton pursuant to file of the council number 58, 2016 as amended.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A passed reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. You know, at least a week or two ago, I had asked the law department and the licensing and inspections department what their plan was to enforce this, because I do have questions, as other people do, about the process for collection, you know, what, specifically what city employees will be in charge of this whole operation. And I do think that, you know, although this legislation is just simply opening an account so that we could put the escrow funds in there, it goes without saying that when this type of legislation comes before council, we have the opportunity to hold the administration's feet to the fire to make sure that we understand that there's going to be a coherent, competent plan in place to collect and to enforce this type of legislation. There have been speakers that have brought up that maybe there are legal questions to this. I'm interested in questioning the law department and the licensing and inspections department further about that. But I do think before final passage on this legislation, that we should make sure that they have a plan in place and a process in place so that this just doesn't fall to the wayside. Thank you.
On the question, just for a little background on this, so the original rental registration ordinance that was litigated, and there's also this rental registration ordinance was attached to that as well. When it was settled, the judge did keep this portion in the new ordinance, so, which was very encouraging. He felt, I think at that point, he felt it would pass muster. And again, this is, you know, what it is. It's just setting up the account. But I do have no, I have no problem with trying to get ahead of this a little bit and find out if, you know, the city has a plan and how they're going to go about doing it, or at least give us the outline of how they're going to do it before we move the legislation forward. But I'm very encouraged that this is here in front of us and that we are moving ahead with a plan to enforce this.
Yeah, I just want to add too, when I had originally had a brief conversation with the city solicitor regarding the previous legislation when we were accepting the settlement for the rental registration. And I brought up to her about the, what the process would be like. And at that point, they were still, you know, coming up with that and discussing that. So I will be interested to see, you know, how those conversations have progressed and, and where the city is at, at this point. Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, seven A for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption filed with council number 65, 2019, amending file of the council number 9, 2010, and ordinance repealing file of the council number 95, 2009 as amended, and ordinance entitled, signifying the intention and desire of the council of the City of Scranton to organize an authority to be known as the Scranton Public Library Authority under provisions of the Act of the General Assembly known as the Municipality Authorities Act 53 PACSA 56, setting forth and authorizing execution of articles of incorporation, appointing and fixing the terms of the first members of the board of such authority, and upon organization conveying title to the authority for the properties on which the Albright Memorial Library, the Greenridge Library, and the Silkman House are located, authorizing all other necessary action and repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances, resolutions or parts of resolutions, to revive the Scranton Public Library Authority.
As temporary chairperson of the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw?
Yes.
Mr. Paley?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned.